Here we go, three, two, one.
Yeah.
Good morning and welcome to January 23rd School Board Workshop. We got three items today on the agenda. Before we get into that, public comments, we do not have any public comments. So, we will skip to the start of the workshop with item number one, which is Legal Department, Millage and Referendum update. So, Dr. Wyson, before we get to Ms. DiAgostino, if you want to say a couple of words?
Yes, good morning Chairman and Board members. This is our first workshop of calendar year 24 and we've got a lot on our plates this semester, both in terms of talking about how our students are doing this year, but also really getting into the planning cycles for '24, '25 and beyond. And certainly, we know that one of the topics that we will have to address this semester is the millage funding. And so, knowing that that substantive conversation will start soon, we wanted to begin today with an update from legal counsel, really regarding the statutory and regulatory contours and what's changed since the last time the school district of Manatee County pursued this opportunity with the voters. And so, today is really not about the substance of what could be proposed in the future or what that might look like. Today is really just the legal framework in which we will go through this process. And Board members, I want you to know that, of course, this presentation, which was developed by Ms. DiAgostino and Mr. Dye, is for you today to listen to and process and ask questions about tomorrow. Our principals and district leaders will receive the same presentation and their opportunity to ask questions. And then, after that, we will likely take this presentation and get it in a format that can be shared with all employees so that everyone knows the rules of the road going into these discussions and this process. And it's important to me that both you as Board members and all of our employees and me too, understand what those rules are and how to ask questions when they come up. So, that's really what today's presentation is about. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'll just reiterate that too. I think that it's just important that we're not getting into the do's, don'ts, the whys, the yes, the noes for the referendum that, because we advertise it just about the legal updates from the referendum. So, with that, Ms. DiAgostino, it is floor's yours.
Thank you very much. Is it okay if I present from the?
I don't mind at all.
Or would you prefer that I be down there? Okay, thank you. So, can you pull up the presentation?
Yeah, can you run it, Ms. Con? Yeah, okay.
You have to call them and tell them to put it on.
There we go, thank you.
There it is.
So, the primary focus of the discussion today is the statute itself, Section 106.113 Florida statutes. And this, I started off with this slide to show you what the statute used to say, because this is what the statute was from 2009 to June 30th of 2022, just so you could have a frame of reference to see the difference between the statute compared to today. So, if you advance to the next slide, now you'll see Section 106.113 Florida statutes effective July 1st of 2022. And in particular, the paragraph, sub-paragraph 2, and all the blue language is the new language. This is the new text. So, it's, I wanted you to have a way to flip back and forth between the two and see, okay, what did it use to say and what does it say now? And then, if you, and I'm going to get into the nitty gritty in the next couple of slides. So, if you can go to the next one. So, let's break it down, because anytime you're looking at a new statute, you really have to go sentence by sentence, phrase by phrase, and take your time going through it. So, a breakdown, because there weren't any changes to subsection 1, all the changes are in subsection 2. So, breaking down the first sentence, it now says, "A local government or a person acting on behalf of a local government may not expend or authorize the expenditure of, and a person or group may not accept public funds for a political advertisement or any other communication sent to electors." And that's really important new language concerning any issue, referendum, or amendment, including any state question that is subject for the voters. So, the key takeaways to the change here are that the district obviously never could, cannot pay for political advertising with public funds, the district cannot generally spend public funds on communications sent to electors concerning a referendum. And then, any other communications is incredibly broad, very broad. So, we have to be very careful when you consider what constitutes a communication. To the next slide. Thank you. So, now, let's look at the next sentence and break that down. So, the subsection applies to a communication initiated by a local government or a person acting on behalf of a local government, regardless of whether it is limited to factual information or advocacy for the passage or defeat of a referendum, an issue, or an amendment. So, again, the takeaway is here, and we don't know how a court's going to interpret this, but it says communications initiated by a local government is what matters. And it doesn't matter whether it's purely factual or whether it's advocacy. So, next slide. Thank you. So, the third sentence, and this is the most complex of the sentences, in my opinion, which is why, forgive me, there is so much content here. But this third sentence talks about what isn't precluded. So, it's meant to say, okay, well, we've told you what you can't do, but here's some exceptions. So, this subsection doesn't preclude a local government or a person acting on behalf of the government from, and it breaks it down into really five key categories. Reporting unofficial actions of the board in an accurate, fair, and impartial manner. Posting factual information on websites or printed materials. Hosting or providing factual information at a public forum. Providing factual information in response to an inquiry. Or providing information as otherwise required by law. And those words are, you know, the fact that they keep saying, "Information, information, information, facts, accurate, fair, impartial," that says a lot, because they're basically, and they're focusing on, I think with this language, if people come to you and want information, you can give them information. The issue is, are you, you know, sending it to the electors? Because we already know from the prior sentence that we can't send things to the electors. But if the elector is coming to you and saying, "Tell me more," then you can give information. So, and then presumably, the above can be accomplished with public funds through communications initiated by the district and those acting on their behalf, as long as the information is limited to accurate, fair, factual, impartial, informative, free of advocacy, free of opinion, and not sent to the elector. I think that's because the elector has to be coming to you. Now, subsection 3 did not change, but it's important to point out, with the exception of the prohibition specified in number 2. So, you know, although, you know, you can't do anything in subsection 2, you're still, as elected officials, not precluded from expressing your opinion on an issue at any time. And I think it's important to note that the legislature could have changed that to advocating. You're not precluded from advocating, but they didn't do that. They stuck with the word "opinion." So, you have to be careful, as elected officials, to focus on your opinion, not advocacy. And it's important to note too, that it's elected officials. So, superintendents who are appointed cannot advocate. Superintendents who cannot give their opinion. Superintendents who are elected can.
DiAgostino?
Yes, please.
If a Board member is appointed by the governor, you're okay now, but would that not be an elected, where would that fall in?
You know, I'd have to research that. I don't know what the courts would say, because the way this is written, it's very specific about elected official, not appointed. So, I don't know. That might, I don't know whether there's any case law on that issue.
And then, before we go on there, so if a voter comes to me or I'm in a public forum and they say, "What's your opinion on the millage?" And I would say, "I'm for it or against it, but that's my opinion, I'm not advocating for it." What's the, help us understand the difference between advocating and giving our opinion?
Well, I think it's one, this is a tough call, and if you want to jump in, Steve, let me know.
I'll see what you got.
If they ask you what your opinion is and you say, "I think the opinion," and you say, "In my opinion, the millage is a good thing," you're simply saying, "The millage is a good thing." You're not saying, "In my opinion, I think you should vote for the millage." You see the difference? There is a slight distinction, because one is advocating, one is saying what you think others should do. And one is trying to influence another person's vote. Another is saying, "I think it's a good thing for the district." So, it's a fine line. It's a very fine line, from what I can see. And I don't know what your thoughts are, Steve.
I'm a little looser. You know, maybe, I think if you're speaking, you could state your opinion. Advocacy might be more like where you're sending out stuff and taking it to the next level. But if just your opinion is asked for, I think you're pretty, in my opinion, you're pretty free to say whatever you want.
Okay. So, you'll bail me out then?
Yeah. Yeah. You've got my cell number.
Okay, I got your cell number. Thank you. I understand it's difficult.
I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but I will say, I see the two of like being, I agree with Mr. Dye. If I'm pushing it, advocating and pushing it out to emails that I have and mailers and me personally, I think that's different than if someone asks, because otherwise, if a group asks us to come in and speak on the millage, we're going to say, I guess I just, I don't know the difference between advocating and opinion. I'm going to tell them my opinion is it's good, bad, or whatever. That's going to influence their vote just as much as I'm saying, "You should vote." So, I think it is an extremely fine line that, and it'd be different if we were just blasting newsletter, you know, phone, robo-phone, robo-text. But even still, my, so my question is, and we didn't write the statute, but I guess my question is like, so what? Like, I can't pay, if I wanted to, $500 to do a blast email about the referendum? Like, I just don't, how are they going to tell me I can't do that?
Well.
If it's my money?
Oh, private funds are different.
Yeah, but it just says, yeah, but this says, "Elected officials can't express their opinion." So, I'm just saying, I can't even pay for it myself and do it. I understand absolutely the dollars of the district. That's not a question. Like, that's black and white. But, I don't know, I just kind of like, I can't. So, can we post on our Facebooks and Twitters and Instagrams and whatever?
Well, it says you can express your opinion. You can. It says, "Elected Board members may express their opinion on the referendum at any time, provided no public funds are used." So, you can express your opinion. But I think one thing that you can do, recall that there's opinions you express as elected Board members. And then, there's opinions you can express and advocacy that you can do as a private citizen. So, if you were to say, "I'm speaking now as a private citizen, not as an elected Board member," you can absolutely advocate on behalf of the referendum. But as an elected official, I would recommend you stick to giving opinions.
Okay. So, because I just want to make sure I don't do anything that I shouldn't. But if, so if, you know how, obviously, there's signs made, right? And obviously, this is before this new statute. And if there's a post on Facebook that says, "Vote yes to the millage," I can post that on my, share it on my personal.
Absolutely.
But I can't share it on the one that says, "Chad Show, School Board, Manatee County."
I would recommend you do not.
Gotcha, okay.
But you could list factual.
Correct.
Information.
Correct.
That shows what was enhanced.
Correct.
With the use of the funds.
Correct. But not an opinion like, "Vote yes," or "Vote no," or whatever.
I would not recommend you do that.
Gotcha, okay. On a?
Using your Board member Facebook page.
How do we get around, I mean, what legal, I guess you're just reading the law, but isn't that the role of elected officials in quote-unquote "the American democratic system" to go out and advocate for or against policies, proposed laws, taxes? I mean, I'm trying to imagine Governor DeSantis, who wants to, who's pro-school choice, and there's, you know, there's a school choice law that's going through the legislature and he's not allowed to. I mean, they do that all the time. They advocate for their positions. They do press conferences. They talk about the laws that they'd like to get passed and the, how do you reconcile that with the ability of public officials? I mean, it's already bad enough with the sunshine laws, and now we can't even go out as public officials and advocate for the political positions that we believe are appropriate? But I'll just let you respond to that real quick.
Well, the reason I have my opinion is because in subsection 2, they specifically, let me find it here. In subsection 2, they use the word "opinion," not "advocacy." And in subsection 3, they're using the word "opinion," not "advocacy." If they use the word "advocacy," I'd feel more comfortable recommending that you can advocate. But the use of the word "opinion," I think there is a distinction between an opinion and advocacy. So, I just would caution you against advocacy in your official capacity. I think you can accomplish the same effect by being more careful in your communication and simply give opinions. As a private citizen, you can advocate all day long. I can't speak to what the legislature was thinking, but this is the state of the statute, and I always will caution you to be as careful as you can when in doubt. If there were case law interpreting this, showing a distinction between advocacy and opinion that I felt comfortable we could, you know, rely upon, I'd tell you, you could. But there is no case law explaining that distinction. So, that's the recommendation I have.
And I feel the, trying to interpret the legislation, that it has been written in line with what you're saying, that the elected officials are treated differently. Than the, sort of the bureaucracy who stands to gain from the passage of the referendum. So, I think it did carve out, just like an elected superintendent is carved out versus a hired superintendent. So, I feel more in line with what you're saying, Mr. Tatum, that the Board members can express their opinion. Somebody says, "Wait a minute, you're advocating, that's an advocacy or something." That's, to me, that's getting a little nitpicky. And it looks to me more like it was more of a carve, completely carved out. So, and when, you know, when you're expressing your opinion, anybody could always say that you're advocating your opinion, right?
Those are, giving your opinion in favor of something and advocating for it are very close synonyms to each other. And also, I mean, I'm imagining the, you know, Governor DeSantis standing up and saying, "Well, look, now, I want school choice, the school choice law to pass, but it's just my private opinion. I'm not speaking as the governor." I mean, there's no distinction there. You are who you are. Me standing up in front of a group of people and saying, "Look, I'm just giving you my private opinion. I'm not, I'm not speaking as a school Board member." Well, that's what you are, just like the governor of Florida is always the governor of Florida. And him saying, "I'm just giving you my private opinion on this school choice law, but I'm not speaking as the governor." I hear what you're saying, Ms. DiAgostino.
This doesn't apply to the governor, because this applies to local governments. So, it applies to counties, municipalities, school districts, political subdivisions of the state. This isn't applicable to the governor.
Statute that they put on us, not on them?
Correct. Correct. And I would point out that in subsection 2, they use the word "advocate." You know, they specifically say that regardless of whether you're putting in facts, they didn't use the word "opinion." They could have said that whether the communication is limited to factual information or opinions for, you know, regarding passage, but they didn't use the word "opinion." So, that's one of the reasons why I think there is a distinction. Had they meant "opinion" and "advocacy" to mean the same thing, they could have easily used the word "opinion." But they chose the word "advocate" in subsection 2, and they didn't change subsection 3 to say "advocate." So, that's why I think the best course of action and the safest course of action is to just stick to opinions and leave all the advocacy to your private citizen conduct.
Thank you.
Ms. Brack?
To his point, when you go to groups, it's hard to take the banner off that you're an elected school Board member. So, that's the hard part. And that's what's going to be tough, is when you give an opinion or you're saying for or against. I mean, that's just, people are going to come to you and ask, "You're a Board member, what do you think?" "Oh, well, wait a minute, I have to take that banner off and come over here and be my individual taxpayer now." So, that's going to be very difficult. And even on the communications, on subsection 2, it says, "Communication initiated by a local government or person acting on its behalf is what matters." So, that's very broad too. That could be staff.
Yes.
Or person acting on its behalf. So, there's a super fine line there as well. So, when people go out and or doing whatever behind the scenes or the, how we do that is going to matter too. And who's involved in that is going to matter too. So, I'm a little, that concerns me. Or a person acting on its behalf. That's super narrow too.
There's actually a Board policy that deals with freedom of speech in a non-instructional setting as it pertains to instructional staff and support staff, specifically their section, their policies 3310 and 4310. And it explains that for your staff, that if they want to express their own opinions outside of the instructional setting, that they need to clearly state that their opinions are their personal views and not necessarily those of the district. So, I would say that's a similar situation that the Board's in relative to this subsection 3. Just like our employees have to say, "Hey, I'm not speaking as an employee for the district, I'm speaking as a private citizen right now. This is my opinion." It's the same thing. There, it's a correlation.
Okay, so, freedom of speech and all of that, so, staff, whether it's in this building or in our schools, should not be using district email accounts to advocate or give an opinion. They can't use, that's like wearing a badge and standing up, "I'm a private citizen," and talking about this. You've got to undo that. But that's the thing too, that needs to be communicated with our staff, that they cannot use our district email to advocate. They have to use their personal email and voice their opinion. Am I correct in understanding that?
You're jumping ahead. I have this.
Oh, okay.
He's coming up.
All right, all right.
We're getting there.
All right, well, thinking.
If you have more questions, please, but otherwise, I can.
Just one minute, or I'm trying to read.
Yeah, I'm done, go.
I'm reading the first, second, the first slide of the new, and actually, it was in the original statute. This applies to an issue, a referendum, an amendment, including any state questions. So, if the next election, the state amendment for partisan elections, we have the same rules, right? We can't get out there and advocate for or vote against this thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Is it any issue related to the district that we serve or any issue at all?
Yeah, great point.
I mean, it's got to be. I mean, I, I mean, it's got to be, I'm assuming it's about an issue for the district, the school district. Otherwise, so we can't go out and talk about, um, give our opinion about, not that you want to get into it, but abortion, et cetera. I mean, I just feel like we're being, and, and it, listen, you didn't make the law, you're just the one interpreting it and presenting it back to us. So I don't want to feel like we're attacking you because you didn't make this law, right? But it feels like we're being attacked. When I say we, as the local officials, there is no statute for anybody else to do this higher than us, but we can't.
Yeah, it says, an issue, referendum or amendment, including any state question, is subject to a vote of the electors.
Wow.
Wow.
But it gets back to the same restrictions that we're talking about, which is use of public funds.
Correct, correct.
Use of your political position.
And, and really, in a bigger sense, when board members are asked their opinion or you're presenting it something individually, it's always a good practice to say, I'm, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. I'm, I'm speaking, you know, I am a board member.
Yeah, sure, sure.
But I'm not authorized, this is not an official statement from the board.
Correct, from the board.
And that can be almost any topic whatsoever, right?
We need to carry hats.
Agreed.
Board hats, people hats.
Anybody else? No?
I, I have a list of questions, but I just figured I'd wait until you're done.
Okay.
Unless you want me to dump them now.
No, you can do whatever you want, it's fine.
It, it's up to you.
That's okay.
Okay. So going on to the next slide. Now, now that we've analyzed the statute fully, now we can talk about some of the things we can and cannot do. So prohibited, sending any communication paid for with public funds to elect, electors unless in response to an inquiry, spending public funds for political advertising or other communication which advocates for or against the referendum. Next slide, please. So it's important to note, as I said before, no court has weighed in on this new statute. There's no advisory opinions on the statute that have been issued by the division of elections. So it's our recommendation that you limit any communication and issue, that the district, you know, any communication initiated by the district regarding the referendum is, is limited to those five categories that we talked about. Reporting unofficial actions of the board, always being accurate, fair and impartial, facts only, no advocacy or opinions, posting factual information on the website or in printed materials or signage, hosting or providing information at a public forum, providing factual informations in response to an inquiry, someone asks a question, we give them a fact sheet about the referendum, or the catch-all is the last statement as otherwise required by law. To the extent that we're required to report on things, we can answer, you know, state reporting questions about the referendum. So terms to avoid, on the next slide. Vote for, vote against, elect, support, cast your ballot for, defeat, oppose, reject, I want it to be fair and impartial and list both sides of the coin. So any other language which advocates for or against. There's actually a case law on this. These are called the magic words that you don't want to use that indicate advocacy. So these are the terms that need to be avoided. Thank you. You also want to avoid certain imagery, images that tend to indicate a vote for something, thumbs up sign or a thumbs down sign, a check mark. There's case law to, to say, you don't really want to signal one way or the other. Another statute to keep in mind is section 104.31. Generally, it prohibits public officers or employees from using their official authority or influence to interfere with an election or influence the vote of another person. We're not talking about politely encouraging someone, we're talking about coercion, we're talking about inappropriate influence, commanding people, putting pressure on someone to support a certain political purpose. Participating in political campaigns on duty also prohibited and violations would subject someone to a first degree misdemeanor potentially. Outside activities of district staff. Now, this is what we were talking about, employees on their free time, not governed by 106.133 Florida statutes, they're free to engage in whatever form of political expression they would like to do, outside of work hours and on their private time. And specifically, we have district policies one, twelve, one, two, three, one, three, two, three, one and four, two, three, one, which prohibit any district employee from dedicating any work time to an outside activity, interest or association. So they, so that clearly indicates no advocacy for the referendum by any employees while they're on duty. District employees may, of course, express their opinions off duty, off campus, as private citizens, and coupled with the, the policy that I mentioned earlier, the policies three, three, one, zero and four, three, one, zero, we would recommend that any employee who is going to advocate in their private time, make it very clear that their opinions are their personal views, not those of the district, and they're speaking as a private citizen for their own protection. And of, and then we go on, this brings to the point of resources. At the end of the last bullet, we're talking about not using any district resources. No computers, copiers, email, facilities, letterhead, machinery, paper, personnel, supplies, telephones, time, technology, any of that. So I tried to have that laundry list on that last bullet. Yeah, stay on this slide, please. Oh, did we jump, we jumped ahead, I'm sorry, can you go back one? Thank you. Permitted activities of district staff. They may during work hours give out accurate, fair and impartial information, reporting on the official actions of the board, in printed materials or at a public forum or in response to an inquiry and otherwise as required by law, no advocacy or opinions. So if, if a parent approaches a teacher and says, hey, I have questions about the millage, I'd really like to know more, here's the fact sheet. You know, here's a piece of paper that will answer, will tell you facts about the millage. Next slide. Thank you. So Mr. Dye and I, consultation, these are our recommendations, that no information related to the millage or referendum should be disseminated, reported, posted, printed, provided or published until it has been reviewed and approved by both district leadership and the general counsel, myself. Board members should, of course, not use their official authority to influence another person's vote. Not that I have concerns about that. And then, next. And then lastly, if board members have questions regarding the presentation or how to govern themselves, those should be directed to Mr. Dye and any district employees with questions. We created an email account so that they can email their question to the account and then we can look into it and get back to them.
You want to?
Yeah, I'll start us off.
Questions?
Yeah, so, I, I, I don't feel as if there are dramatic changes to this law personally. I think it refined what's allowed and what's not, but it didn't really change the main issue of, you, you can't use public funds to do any of these things. It, it really clearly defined, oh, now it means communications, but we've always understood that to mean that, right? Like when you're running for public office, you know you can't send emails through the district email for the exact same reason, you can't use public funds and using email is a, so, so that, I'm, I'm, I feel as if this defined things more than it really changed a whole lot in my perspective, having been through it twice now. I do know of board members that would say, I'm going to go out there and advocate. But even as a board, we talked about that you shouldn't do that, that just, they just wanted to do it. I, I do want to make sure, though, that I do understand a few things, because I do think that some things were more clearly defined and that is a good thing, as long as everyone understands the lines. So if I were invited to an event or a district person were invited to an event during a normal day to speak about the millage, okay, let's not say me, let's say a district person, because that, that, I, I can think of lots of events where like somebody was invited to the Manatee Chamber of Commerce or something like that, where they were invited to speak about the millage and they go and they speak about the millage and there's a fact sheet. And the fact sheet is devoid of the imagery that you have said, because I do think, I, I'm trying to think back at the imagery and I think there, there might have been a check mark on imagery, so that, I think, is clearly defined, I appreciate that. But in general, the, the paperwork that was always sent out at that point was always factual, it was always, here is where it's going. If a, a, a district person were to go and speak at an event, and it's a, a, a community event, people have paid to go there to hear about this topic, is it acceptable that the people that are going there, the district personnel that are going there, take their one sheater and lay them on the table for everyone there? Is it acceptable that they take their one sheet of information that they have and lay it on the table, at each table, that everyone is, everyone has paid to go to that event? And my question is really going specifically to the idea of initiation, okay? Because it's, it, and so if people are paying to go to an event, they are initiating that they would like more information. If the district were then to pass out information to all of the tables, is that appropriate?
I think if the district employee were to place on the tables fact sheets. So that people can either choose to take that fact sheet or not.
Yes.
That's perfectly fine.
Okay.
If I can enter, and I, I don't think it has to be limited to a fact sheet, I mean, they could do a PowerPoint or something.
Sure.
Yeah.
And I think, I, and I totally understand that, but I also think about, like, I think about how events like that usually work, and a lot of times, there is usually a PowerPoint, but there's usually also some sort of handout which gives more information. Okay, now I want to talk about how this applies to any type of PAC, right? There was, the last two election cycles that were.
Doesn't apply to any type of PAC.
Thank you, I just want to make sure that that is clear. They can write, say whatever they want, they can put out any ad they want, they can mail anything they want.
They're governed by their own rules.
They got their own thing to deal with, they get their own money, a, as long as it's not public funds, and public funds can also be interpreted as any of the people being paid through public funds, as long as it's not public funds, if it isn't, if it is a person using PAC money to distribute whatever it is that they want to distribute, because I think there was some confusion in the past couple of elections for the millage where there are people that don't understand, when you're receiving something, that isn't district funds, right? There was this accusations of, well, you're doing, like, that's not what happened, what happened was, there are PACs out there, there was more than one. I guess there'll only be one because Mr. Minor has passed, but he made his own. He did. But that funded the signs, that funded the ads, that funded the mailers, that funded the information cards and all of those types of things, that, that hired their own advertisement companies, they, there were outside community members that did those things, none of this applies to them.
Correct.
Okay. And we've talked about, like, as a board member, whenever I would go to something, if I was told or asked about this, I would always, always start out with, I am not telling you how to vote. I would always start out with that, I'd say, I will give you information, I can tell you what I know, but I am not going to tell you how to vote. And actually, I think when you say that to people, that disarms them, like, oh, you're not? Nope, not going to tell you how to vote. I'm going to tell you the facts, this is what I know, I've done a lot of research, this is what I know about it, I've looked into this and I've looked into that, here's this information so that you have it. You go make your own decision, whatever it is, please go vote on that day. You know, whichever way you vote, just go vote. You know, but making it really clear, like, I'm not putting pressure on you, you know, because if you hear the facts and you make your own decision, well, what else more, what more can I ask for? You know, as long as you get educated, that's always my thing, is please get educated before you go vote, on anything, on any person, on anything, go get educated before you go vote on it, whatever it is. So that's, that, I, I just wanted to make sure there's, there was distinctions between, like, the district and a PAC, because that's really important, because I don't think that everyone in the community always understands that, there is a distinction and they have totally different rules. So if you're seeing something out there, maybe you should look and see who paid for it, because it isn't the district, right? If you're seeing, and I want to make that really clear. And then I remember in the past, before any type of factual information was sent out or put out or a presentation was made, a PowerPoint presentation was made, that the attorneys would always review all those things to make sure that any district personnel, before they go and make a presentation, that it does align with the law. And I, and like I said, there are some changes, I don't, I feel like, to me, they're more refining things and making it clearer, but I don't know if I really feel like it makes a massive, maybe just my perspective, I don't feel like it makes a massive change to what we've done in the past. And, but what I want to make sure is that whatever is presented does align with what we have here, and my expectation would be that whatever presentations are made, that you and Mr. Dye would review it to make sure it does align, that we are following and, and, and adhering to all of this. Is that a fair expectation?
That was our plan.
Okay. And I really love the idea and I love the plan of presenting this and then also finding a way to make sure that the employees know the guidance. I believe that has been done in the past as well, but I think that they're always going to need a refresher, especially since I think there are some things in here that are very clearly defined. And I, I think the vast majority of employees know these things already, because we've been through it twice. But it's always, I think, a really good thing to do a refresher and find a way that they have it in a way that won't take up probably a lot of their time either, because they don't have a lot of time, but find a way to make sure, like, they know these are the confines of how you can go forward, so.
I really appreciate this, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, Ms. Ray?
Okay. I like that you state the policies for our staff and I'll go and look at that as well. But when this first rolled out, way back, and I'm not going to disparage any former board member, when they went to events, they were the keynote for that event to talk about this particular thing. On several, I was at several different events. So I agree, this defines it a little more, you can and cannot do thing. As far as spending funding, I know last time or the time before, I asked about the public funds being used from this and I was, first of all, let me say this, I don't have a greater concern about following the statute and what we can and cannot do with this cycle as I did prior. And that's not to say good or bad, I'm just saying, I asked about what funds were being used and I was told, back then, it was funding that we collected for after-school programs that went through our accounts. So that was public funding in the past, I believe, in my opinion. To me, it was one of those accounts that we just kind of mess with. So, and then I do know that in the past, when the referendum was being talked about for adding arts into it, there was an article in a local paper that quoted one of our arts teachers and their opinion, but they used their, in the paper, they used the title, the teacher or the director over was used in it. So I'm glad that we have clear directives on this and it's, it's so hard to take off the hat, you know, you can do it all, you, try to do it all you want, you can have every marker off that you're a board member, but when you go to a group, they know you're a board member. So I might have to have a conversation with you, Mr. Dye, privately about, okay, if I'm asked this question, what do I say, if I'm asked that question, what do I say? So it's going to be hard, I think, in my opinion, it's going to be very hard, because we, as a board, are basically saying to the community, this is what we need, but I can't go out and tell you what, why, or I'm not going to tell them how to vote either, all I can tell you is go to our website and look at all the good things it's done. I don't know, this is going to be. I don't know, this is going to be. So that's all I want to say, but I do know, last time around, there were quotes in the paper by employees. So that will have to be a little articulated.
The quote's on the issue, right?
I'm not sure about the quotes, but the safest thing, and if we can come back to that, the safest thing for you to do is anytime you're speaking, you can always say, "I speak today as a private citizen." And if you say those words, "I speak today as a private citizen, and every opinion I express today is my opinion as a private citizen," then you're fine. If you say that as a preface.
If the paper writes an article and still says,
Right.
"Teacher so-and-so, or chair, you know, school board member so-and-so," that's, you may have said that.
We're not responsible for the communications that the papers put out. If you preface your remarks.
I can't control what the paper writes.
But if the person says, "I now receive $8,000 more a year because of the millage," that is factual.
Correct.
If the art, if an art teacher says, "My students now have more paint supplies because of the funding from the millage," that is factual.
I'm sorry, I was talking about if a board member were at a...
Right, but we were talking about an art teacher, like, they aren't hampered as long as they're saying something that is factual.
Sure.
And there's a whole lot they can say that is factual.
Sure.
If the, if the teacher that's teaching technology says, "And now I have these brand-new 3D printers because of the funding from the millage," that is factual.
Absolutely.
You can show that that is true. So that doesn't hamper somebody from saying the truth, which is, look at all these things that we now have because of this additional funding. That, that's not, that's just information that people should know because I think if you don't have kids in our school, or if you're not able to take a tour, you're not going to know that those things are happening or existing unless there are people saying, "Well, just so you know, now I have this kiln that I can create these different kinds of projects, and that kiln was paid for by the millage." So I don't know, I don't know what the quotes are, I'd have to go back and search for that, it'd be kind of interesting to see what it is. But as long as they're saying, like, "Well, this is, this is what it paid for. Look at, now I have an extra, now we have this extra technology class in elementary schools," factual. You know?
I actually toyed with the idea of doing a Dragnet thing, just the facts, man, just the facts.
Yeah.
Because really, if you, if you think of that, just the facts, you're fine.
I just want to make sure that employees aren't so scared that they don't say "facts" because I don't know a single employee that couldn't say, "And this is how it's getting spent. Let me show you, this is where it's going, this is what I now have access to for my students." That's just facts. If some people don't like those facts, they can vote against it. If they go, "Man, they don't need any more 3D printers, I can't believe..." Okay, but at least you've gotten the facts, right? Like, I just... And I want to point out one thing about this law. This law does not say that you cannot pay for a special election with public funds. It says you cannot pay for advertisements with public funds.
Advertisements or any communication, correct.
The money that was spent in reference to the after-school care, which you can consider it public funds or not, that was a whole debate too, that was to pay for the election. Not for any information put out there, not for anything else, but for the special election.
The cost of it, yeah.
The cost of the special election, only to show that it is not money being taken away from money that was specifically designed for students, but as an outside business practice the school district had, so that it wasn't taking anything away. But I just want to show that that's not actually part of this law anyway. I just want to make that really clear because...
It's not about the cost of funding an election, no.
Not that we had that cost this time anyways, I just want to make that really clear that that money was not about any type of information. It was just about paying for the election, so.
Ms. Foreman, anything closing?
Yes, I wanted to ask some questions about district resources and get some clarification there on how school board members use district resources. For example, we're told, if we have a question regarding this, to seek advice of the attorney. Is the attorney billing the school district, or is he billing the PAC?
I don't work for the PAC at all.
But if we pay you, if the district pays you to advise us, are we in violation of using district resources?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay. All right.
It would just be the same as giving you any legal advice.
Advice on anything?
Yeah, it's legal advice. Just because it's legal advice on how to safely navigate the statute and comply, that doesn't mean that you can't use.
Okay. Now, employees using district resources, at the last election, we had employees doing videos, okay? They were factual, but they were using our media resources. They were using there, I assume that they were doing this during work hours. Is that a violation, even if it's, they're not, it's strictly for the purpose of presenting facts about the referendum and what it does? Is that okay?
I think that's a form of communication. The issue is, how is that communication disseminated? And why is it disseminated? Are we, if someone comes to us and says, "Hey, I have a question about the millage, and we've created a video that talks about the millage," can we say, "Hey, we've got this video presentation, let me give you a copy of it, and this will answer your questions?" That's just another form of communication by which we're giving them facts in response to a question. If we were doing an email blast out to the community, sending everyone, sending all the electors the video, that would be improper. Do you see the distinction? It's, are they coming to us for the information?
So if we put it out on Facebook, that's improper?
I would, I...
I mean, you still theoretically have to be following or...
I think, I would be more comfortable, I would be more comfortable if it only was on our website because people have to come to us to find it.
No, I do think we can, I think we can put up signs at schools.
Okay, yeah, that was a controversy last time too, because...
Only is it factual?
Because it was informing, not advocate.
It's on our site, and it's kind of a printed material.
Kid who wants to say, "Vote for," or something, obviously, but...
Here's what, you know, funds have been used for at this school, or whatever.
Yeah, the new language says, you know, "or any other communications sent to electors." So to me, if the electors coming to us, we're in a safer position. But if we're the ones trying to send out and push the message, that's what we want to be very careful of. So if we put it on our website, they have to come to us. If we've got to post it at our school, they've got to come to our school. But us pushing it out, and I, I don't know how you consider a Facebook page because, you know, if people are following our Facebook page, are they coming to us, or are we giving it out? I'd probably err on the side of not putting it on the Facebook page.
It says on their, on our website.
I think our website, we're fine, because that's specifically mentioned.
That's the only place kind of social media is mentioned.
Right, so I think our website's fine, I think in printed materials and signage, I would, I would probably say, let's stay away from putting it on a social media site. Let's let them come ask for it, and then we can direct them to the website.
And then another thing, as far as district employees helping us out, okay? You will give advice, you're a district employee. I know in the last election, I wrote an op-ed, which I don't think ever went through the attorneys, but it went through staff here. They were looking at it on their, you know, at work, and they were offering advice and assisting on it. You know, I think we have to do a PowerPoint, you know, presentation, you know, they're drafting the PowerPoint. We're not coming up with that on our own. Where's the line?
If the op-ed was purely factual, I think there's a distinction there. I think if, I think we should look at any ideas that the board members have on a case-by-case basis, rather than analyzing what happened in the past and trying to piecemeal that. I think if the opportunity comes up, we should contact Mr. Dye, and we should work through those issues. What do you think, Steve?
Yeah, and I think, keeping in mind the other points that have been made about whether you're presenting yourself as a private individual versus as a board member, we would look at that.
Yeah, I was definitely as a board member, you know, talking about board experience.
But I agree with Ms. Messenger, there's not been a big problem in the past campaigns, but we're just giving you the knowledge of the statute to keep in mind, the exact wording of the statute, and the staff as well.
Now, what's the penalty if we violate this?
Sorry.
You know, Mrs. Foreman is a rule breaker, right?
Always, always looking for...
This actual statute doesn't have a penalty.
I'd have to look into that, whether there's a penalty.
Kind of a troubling question, though, you know?
It is. Oh, my gosh.
Just want to have yourself on them.
I'm good.
Bail money, have we got bail money?
So, so, just a couple of quick questions, just to kind of verify too. So we are okay with having those factual one-pagers at the schools, ready for people to come up and ask for any kind of questions, et cetera? And I know we're kind of getting into the nitty-gritty here, and I don't necessarily want to do that, but I do think, so you're saying we have these videos of how the funding has affected the schools with whatever we've purchased, whatever programs we've started with them, and we have great videos and content we put on our website. On Facebook, can we not say, "For more information, on the road the referendum is done, visit such and such"? Or is that directing them, that's not giving them the information, that's just telling them where they can find it? Because, because it's great that we have it, but if they don't know where to get it, it don't matter. So we got to tell them where to get the information, and...
I think posting something on the Facebook page that says, "For more information about the millage, please go to our website," is fine.
Okay.
Because you're not actually giving them.
Right, they got to click on it, and they got to go...
They got it, they have to, they have to take the step to go further.
Okay.
I think one of the main takeaways, board members or staff, is it's more of how to technically speak or communicate. So it's, instead of just in a big, broad, like, how people talk, if they're not being technical, you know, you should support this because it's good. Is what, you know, is more what we're trying to get away from. It's this, instead you say, "This funding has been beneficial to the district in these ways."
I wouldn't even use the word "beneficial." I would say the funding has allowed the district to purchase the following things. You know, stay away from the word "beneficial."
Compensation...
The implication is there, obviously.
Compensation's been increased. The district may have increased compensation to teachers. Not, we're now more competitive.
Right, got you.
It's just a matter of how you say it.
Sure.
Which is more pressure on you when you're out there trying to speak, right?
There's no penalty, so don't worry.
Well, I worked the polls during the last cycle, and there were people coming in and making comments. Kids, even, that their teacher told them they needed to come and vote. And I wouldn't say that, because if it didn't happen, it happened. So that's their opinion outside of hoping of their role, you know, as a person who benefits from that. So I always feel a little shocked, but I was also not shocked too. I'm like, okay, that affects their livelihood, really. So, yeah. It's very, that fine line is so thin, and to Ms. Foreman's point, whereas in the statute, if you violate that, what are, it's almost an ethics thing.
It's the division of elections that...
Right, that would go to the division of elections.
You're referred there for an investigation.
Okay. So now we know what will happen, Ms. Foreman?
They don't take action, investigate.
Not too much, yeah, so, okay. All right.
My takeaway is, elected board members and elected superintendents may express their opinions on a referendum at any time, provided no public funds are used to do so. So I think that's going to be my guiding principle. I appreciate your, everything you told us, so, I mean, that's exactly what I would expect from you, is to give your honest opinion based on your reading of the law. I do still have one, I do still have one more question, and that would be, my official email account, Mrs. Jones writes me and says, "Dear Mr. Tatum, you're raising my taxes, and I don't like that." And I write back and I say, "Dear Mrs. Jones, actually, it might be that you're paying more money, but actually, the tax rate has gone down from 7.3 to 6.41 over the last five years." Am I, am I allowed to use my official email account to have that kind of communication with?
It's factual, yeah.
Don't ask her anything.
Well, because people are going to start emailing me, like, they're going to email me.
Oh, yeah.
You're allowed to use your official email account to respond factually.
Respond factually, okay, great.
When in doubt?
When in doubt, run it through Steve. Mr. Dye, for you.
Yeah, that's true, but even op-eds, I mean, I don't see myself running op-eds through. It's just part of being, I have a more expansive view of this. Like Mr. Dye says, it's part of my role as an elected official to provide my opinion on matters of public policy, and, but I hear what you're saying. I appreciate the information you've provided as our legal counsel. That's exactly what I would expect, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much for that presentation. And, Board, I'll ask, does anyone need to go bathroom or anything, use it? We've been an hour.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, we'll go five-minute recess.
Along the way, so thank you and Dr. Weiselman.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. This is, there are a few slides here, so decided to come down to the podium just so I'm not looking at Mrs. Messenger's side view there. So, and first of all, I, and I've done this a couple of times, but I want to thank Mr. Chapman and Mr. Edwards, who have kind of, you know, led this effort and appreciate, you know, the work that they've done and the structure in place. And I told you during the interview process that it was actually an advantage, that a strategic plan was in place, that we weren't starting over, you know, from scratch, and that it was well thought out. And so, you know, just again, kind of continuing that dialogue, I want to just point out that really in looking at the document itself, in the aggregate, this is a big plan. It's really comprehensive. And so when you, when you look at the, you know, the parts individually, and then you kind of put it back together, there are a total of 22 goals in the three sections of the plan, 87 strategies, and then the word metric is used 216 times. So this is a pretty voluminous plan, and that may be appropriate, given that it's a four-year scope of work. And I want to dive into a little bit more of that today. But again, at the, at the last workshop, what we talked about was narrowing this down a little bit, or prioritizing certain things. So we're going to talk about that. But really, the, the purpose today, because each of you has talked with me about different things, and of course, I can't be a conduit between you, and so this is your only opportunity to really talk. But there are some different ideas, and we'll kind of show you what that looks like. And then, and then I'm going to sit back down and listen to your discussion, because we're, we're looking to see where there's consensus among the five of you about, you know, where to head next. And from my vantage point, that direction is important this time of year as we move into budget and staffing. Because resource allocation decisions, recommendations, really drive how much of this work gets done, and in what timelines and intervals. So that's the, that's really the purpose today, is to throw some information at you, and give you some time to react to it and talk to each other. And again, as a staff, we're all listening for signal from you, so that we know the best way to allocate or recommend resource allocations. So just some general, you know, thoughts, again, six months in to this work for me. Again, this is a well-constructed, very comprehensive plan. The, the goals, the strategies, the metrics, they're well-aligned to the current mission and vision. There was discussion in October about looking at revising the mission and vision. And to me, if you do that, then you have to go back and look at your goals and your strategies and your metrics, and say, does that, do those work plans still align to the signal that's in the mission and the vision? So changing one really changes all of it. There's also a nice balance among those 216 metrics of things that are ambitious and things that are achievable. And often, you know, in strategic planning processes, the question is, do you set goals that there's a clear path to achieve them? Or do you set goals that may be really aspirational, that everyone hopes can be accomplished, even if the path to them, you know, is very difficult? Some things that, that I'm looking at, and again, these are just my observations, really diving into this plan and going through metric by metric. There are some places where, from my vantage point, the strategy that's identified is misaligned with the metrics that are underneath them. So for example, there are some cases where we're calling for additional teacher training, and then the metric, the evidence relates to student performance. Teacher training is an important contributor to student outcomes, but one is not a cause of the other. And so if you have a metric that measures performance as the determiner of the effectiveness of training, that's not the only variable. That's just one example, but, but there are some others. Some of the metrics are very task-oriented, so they're, they represent projects or things to do, while others are much more complex measurements. So for example, there, there are some metrics that speak to closing achievement gaps across federal subgroups. That, that single metric might take 12, 13, 14 data tables to measure, whereas another metric is a, here's something that a department needs to get done in the next four years. So there's some differences there. That's not a bad thing, it's just an observation. The plan is really comprehensive, and so the question becomes, is everything equally a priority, right? Again, across 216 metrics, do you want the same amount of time and effort applied to each? Or are there things that, some things are more important than others? And again, this is the board's plan. So if it were the staff plan, we could sit as a cabinet and say, okay, here's what we think is important, let's get this done. But this is your plan for the strategic direction of the district and the community. And so if there, if there is consensus around priorities, that's good for us to know as we sit and hammer out staffing allocations and, and budget proposals for you and all of that. Without any prioritization, I would argue that we end up in resource competition, right? And I was in, you know, my, my last teaching assignment, before I became an administrator, I was an economics teacher, and the first thing you teach is scarcity, right? And, and the fact that there's never enough time, and there's never enough money to do everything in your own life, and that applies in, in government and business and organizations too. So what metrics are the most important, such that when you get to that point of resource scarcity, how you allocate those resources should reflect your, your priorities? As I visit schools, as I visit departments, we talk a lot about needs that different leaders perceive. And if I put all of those needs together on one big list, the needs identified by individual leaders far exceed the resources available. And so that's the prioritization piece. The last observation is, we have not published a SWOT analysis, a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats analysis related to this plan. And again, I wasn't here for all of the work that, that went into this. But, but sometimes those analyses are important for a couple of reasons. First of all, because this is a four-year plan that the board approved in November of 2022, if we, if we never make any changes to it, there are lots of things that are happening that impact our work, right? The legislature is meeting now, they meet every year, and the scope of our work changes. Our priorities change based on those mandates. That happens at the federal level as well. Another example is, there are lots of constraints on the decisions that the staff makes in terms of how to operationalize this. And, and one example of that is the collective bargaining agreement, right? So there are lots of metrics in this plan that speak to more teacher training, but the bottom line is, we have an agreement between the district and the association about how non-teaching time is structured. And I would argue there's probably more increased training in this plan than may be achievable under the contours of the collective bargaining agreement. So that's just a reality. Again, not, not a bad thing, just, just something to think about. So, Board members, at the October 27th workshop, after Mr. Chapman's update on the plan and, and performance for 2223, you had the discussion about mission and vision, and we talked about different parts of the plan. And then at the end, there was kind of a call for each board member to submit, you know, things that they thought should be prioritized. And, and of course, you each independently submitted that to the board clerk, and you don't get to know what each other submitted because of the, the constraints we operate under. And so this is our opportunity to talk about that. In doing that work, some board members went directly to the plan and said, I think these goals are most important. And other board members simply identified priorities, some of which are clearly linked in the plan and some are not. So we did some staff analysis and, and some linkages, and, and, you know, here's some observations from what you submitted. There is overwhelming interest on the board in thematically what we just labeled early learning and literacy. And again, there are some specific goals in the plan that board members, that at least one board member identified, but collectively, four of you identified something on this list. There was a reference to just generally improving reading results, and there are some goals and metrics that speak directly to that, although there's not a single overriding goal. And then there was also a reference to increasing the number of students in pre-K and looking for financing for that second half day of VPK. And there's, there's one goal in there that speaks to community partnerships and, and pre-K learning, but there's nothing that, that focuses specifically on that. So that was one theme we saw in what you each provided. Another area of emphasis, and this probably isn't surprising, just generally grouped under employees. So some ensuring training, particularly around student services and trauma. And that's often important because teachers who feel well-prepared to deal with those situations are more likely to stay. Certainly serve students well, but also stay in the profession. There were some specific thoughts about teacher and bus driver turnover or employee retention after a five-year period in specific career fields. And again, there are some goals that speak to that, but not at that specific level. For example, there's one metric that speaks to looking at new teacher retention after one year and after three years. That's a very clear, that's something we can measure and give you a clear number on. But new teacher retention is very different from general employee retention or all-faculty retention. There was a, a reference to looking at how we can do different kind of more innovative employment opportunities, so looking at either part-time teachers or dual employment, like being a, you know, classroom aide during the day, and then a, a, you know, a custodian. We have a lot of employees with two jobs, why couldn't both jobs be with us? So that was referenced by a board member. There's nothing about that in the strategic plan. ESE, classroom staffing, there's one metric related to that. So, so again, just, just kind of consolidating these things. There were some other priorities that were identified as well. This slide contains things that are already in the plan at the goal-strategy-metric level. And, you know, they, they speak to a variety of topics, so career training, civics, safety and security, promoting our schools and district as competitive. And then there were some ideas that were, again, linked, but, but maybe not directly. So bus route management, on-time arrival, and drop-off of buses. There is one metric in there about improving on-time performance in transportation, but it's under a goal and strategy that relates to a secure financial position, right? And so, you know, if, if transportation is a high priority, we may need to allocate more resources there. And I don't know that that should fall under a, a financial piece as opposed to a operational efficiency. Some other things, so that's what you kind of each individually submitted and that, you know, we put together. Some other things, again, just from six months in to my work here. There's no goal or strategy or metric that speaks directly to school grades and the state accountability system and all of the school improvement requirements and statute. There are goals, strategies, and metrics in the plan that, when achieved, may increase school grades because student achievement is growing. But we don't directly talk about those things in the plan. And I'm okay with that, Board members. It is interesting, again, just interacting throughout the community. I, I've gotten many questions about what, you know, why is Manatee a B district and what's the path to an A? We don't specifically talk about those things in the plan. There's not a reference or metric directly related to graduation rates. Again, there are goals, strategies, and metrics that, if achieved, will result in higher graduation rates. But we don't set any kind of a target. And this is an area where, when you do an analysis across districts, we underperform a little bit. And it's something that Mr. Jensen and I have been talking a lot about, something we both care a lot about as, as former high school teachers. And I, and I know that the entire leadership team feels that, that this is important. So again, what, doing the work of the strategic plan should increase graduation rates, but we don't actually explicitly say that. Finally, there's, there is some reference, but it's limited, related to growth management. So enrollment, competition, and choice. Again, there's a couple of goals and metrics that speak to competition and marketing. But, but frankly, they don't reflect the personnel, the time, and the tools that we're currently putting into growth and enrollment management. And so I, that, that's just something for the board to think about. The reality is, we are in a, an environment of heightened choice and competition. And, and, you know, I, I, I think I told each of you during the interview process, I, I want, I want to be able to make the argument that we are the right choice for families because we have the best offerings available. And yet, we're not measuring market share or anything like that. So just observations. None of those things have to go in. But again, just as your advisor, you know, on these things, I, there's just things I, I want you to be aware of. So, so having said that, I'm going to just give you a couple of things I think that would be helpful for you all to talk about today. And we don't, we don't have to get to clear answers, but again, we're, we're listening for, and we're not voting on anything because we're in a workshop and we didn't notice that. But again, we're just listening as a leadership team for the emergence of any consensus. I would like some guidance as to at what level the board wants reporting on the strategic plan. So when we're bringing you updates, do you want to hear about progress on the 22 goals, the 87 strategies, or the 216 metrics? Because that makes a difference, right? If we're publishing a comprehensive dashboard where people can click on and look at each metric, that's, that, that, that's time and talent spent on that versus, I think Mr. Chapman gave you an annual report that kind of just went through and said, here's where we're making progress. As, as a team, we'll go in whatever direction you want. I just want to be clear that we're meeting your expectations relating to reporting. I do think that, two things that we may want to consider. The plan kind of on each page restarts numbering, which is, I think, good for the external public part. But when you're tracking 216 metrics, it's, it, from a spreadsheet or a database perspective, it, it, it gets a little bit complex. So I think going through and, and creating, and I kind of did a very, you know, simple nomenclature in this presentation. That may be the type of thing we want to go ahead and do if we're going to report at the metric level for the next three years. Similarly, I think if we are going to do reporting at the metric level, we probably want to create a methodology appendix so that we preserve now the numerators and the denominators of calculations that are being done. Because as people change seats, sometimes you lose that information. And, and you want to have that clearly tracked, if your expectation is that, that you want data at the metric level. And then we probably need to create a thematic cross-reference. So for example, across the entire plan, there are several metrics related to teacher training. And that work, regardless of where it sits in the plan, i- i- is done mostly by instruction and a little bit by HR. Right now, there's, there's no way to look up and say, what are all the metrics that relate to teacher training? What are all the metrics that relate to family support? So that may just be something that, that might be useful, not only for the public, but for the staff. But again, it'll take time, a little time to build that. So, you know, curious about your thoughts there. If there is any interest in formally prioritizing any of the things that you've identified or talked about as a board, then my guidance would be that we should update the plan document and clearly identify those priorities. Again, that doesn't mean we have to remove 200 metrics. It might be that if there are 16 that you really want quarterly updates on, that we identify for the public what those 16 metrics are and how they'll be measured. Right now, the plan says regular updates will be posted, without a lot of direction about what that's going to look like. And then obviously, if we, if we are formally prioritizing, then both our reporting and our resource allocation planning need to reflect those priorities. And, and again, budget, staffing, how we pursue grants. Obviously, if there's anything that's not in the current plan that you think needs to be elevated or prioritized, then obviously, we, we need to do an update to the plan and bring that to the board for approval. And again, whatever those areas are would become a focus for reporting and resource allocation. There are certainly other districts that, and, 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 you know, there are lots of different ways of doing this. There are other districts with four and five-year plans, and some of them do come back once a year and do an update based on any changes that have, you know, been made. Finally, I, I think it'd be worthwhile for you all to talk a little bit about how externalities and emerging opportunities impact the strategic plan. And so again, if, if we consider an annual update, then that allows us to recommend changes based on what's happening in, in DC and in Tallahassee. And I'm just giving you two examples, but, but I've got many others that we're thinking about. So we know that we're on the clock for school start time change legislation that takes effect in '26, '27. That, we're already talking about it as a team, but really, the serious planning probably needs to get underway after this legislative session. And we know that one of the outcomes of that change may be an additional investment of resources into transportation. And those costs may impact other parts of the district budget, and therefore, our ability to get other parts of the plan done. So that's one example of an externality. Another, you know, as, as, as we're meeting, so is the state legislature. Deregulation is through the Senate, working its way through the House. We'll end up getting reconciled. And once we know what's in that final package, if it's signed by the governor, we'll know what new opportunities we may have to reallocate resources. Another thing we may want to think about relates to emerging opportunities. Each of you has, you know, given lots of ideas, and, you know, we're, we're talking about a lot of different, you know, things that we can do. All of those things, if they're not in the strategic plan, compete for resources. And, 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 and it's not just the, the leadership team has ideas as well. And so we may want to think about creating a decision matrix by which we evaluate new and emerging ideas and say, you know, do these things either fit with the strategic plan, or are they so compelling that we should prioritize them and do them anyway, even though that will mean that some other priorities kind of slide down? And I've seen some districts, not necessarily in Florida, that have created these matrices. I know of one district that publishes it, so that the public knows this is the, this is the means by which we decide whether a, an innovative new opportunity is going to be adopted or not. So it's just something, you know, again, it could be another tool. So a small example, the board directed, I think in November, that the Juul Settlement Funds should be put in its own project, and that, and that the staff is to use those funds for vaping education and prevention. That's, that's great. I think we're all in favor of that. Again, it's, that was a, but it's not in the strategic plan, it's an add-on. So do we put it in the plan, or do we just document and say, here was something we did that was outside of the plan? And I think doing all of that will, will strengthen our, our governance work, and then also put us in a, a, a more informed position whenever it's time to create the next strategic plan for the district. So I know I threw a lot at you, you know, in a short amount of time, but I think the timing of these types of conversations is good. Again, as we roll into the end of the legis, or as we near the end of the legislative session, the budget forecast, and all of the other opportunities that are coming up. So, so I appreciate your attention. I'll be happy to answer your questions and then look forward to your discussion.
Anybody, Board member compelling to start first? Everybody just go around?
I'll start.
All right, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank you for all the work that you've put into this entire staff. And going through the slide, and I was here last night till seven, going through a lot of this stuff. I like the idea that you've got all of these different goals, strategies, metrics. If I go to slide number, well, slide number four, I like the idea of the SWOT, S-W-O-T. You're right, we don't have anything in there for recognizing or publishing that. We probably are doing it, it's just not on there. But whenever, you said something about the, although, I've got to find the slide number. Well, here's one. Number seven, alignment with life, G to, S to M1. People don't know what that is. The common person, I know what that is. Goal number two, strategic number two, and metric number one. Am I correct? All right, and that, in your G, S?
G4A.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So that's, that's basically, if you go to our strategic plan, you go to goal number two, strategy number two, then you would have to go to metric number three. Increase the number of percentage of coaches competing, I'm just reading one, you know, from, from our plan. But the person out in the public have looked at our plan, but there's no instructions where to go look for the data behind it. So making that connection, I think, would be helpful for the public. I know during my campaign, people were walking around with this printed document, and like, this is just a guide. It's really not showing me the data behind it. So communicating how we find that data with everyone, I think, would be super beneficial. And in one of the slides, number six, literacy, 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 reading. All of those were through board feedback, and that was from four of us. So that seems to be a, a very cohesive agreement up here, that we need to increase the literacy. And then on slide number seven, again, turnover retention, turnover retention, dual employment. All of those things are, to me, super, super important. The turnover thing, more than anything. Then you go to number eight, literacy, financial literacy. That's super important to me. So, and when you go into number nine, all of that ties into budget management and savings. Where can we save to spend over here? Where can we increase our outcome with the financial behind it? So with all of the strategic, strategic plan talk that we do, we have a beautiful presentation on our website, and Ms. Foreman has the printed always. So, but I always look at it on here. There's no dollar amount tied to it. And that was one of the feedback that I've gotten from the public. Well, how do you know, where do you go to look at that metric? How do you know you're achieving that goal or not? And I, I tried explaining, well, you got to go look at this part, that part, this part. But again, that was during campaign cycle. But you're right, we do have a lot, 216 metrics. So if you did go to goal two, strategy number 80, and then go to metric 200, that's a lot of surfing, if you, so I think my goal for the strategic plan is to narrow it down so it's not so complex for the person to look at. And define the data that connects to every bullet point that we have. The ready-for-life, ready-to-go, all of those. Yeah, and ready-to-learn, yeah. So that would be my feedback to you and, and to the staff. Make it a little directional, so if you have a bullet point, you can hit it. Maybe we can, we already do that, but there's an awful. Maybe we can, we already do that, but there's an awful lot we're measuring. But I just basically wanted to say, you know, there again, G six, S three, M one. Where would I go to find that if I were just out in the public? So, and then on the slide thirteen, all of the rec, well, actually, a lot of the recommendations here, I don't have anything here that I would challenge on your recommendations. I think you're diving really deep into our plan and tying in the people and tying in the money behind it. And I'm super excited that, about the work you're doing on this and the work the board has given input on. So, that's more what I would have wanted to do, would probably align the money with the measurement. So, we can see, I know there's a metric out there and I know all of that, but when I look at the printed version, it doesn't show the funding sources. That's all.
Oh, you mean, so my question is on that?
Yeah.
Because I never even thought about that. Are you saying, next to the goal, next to the strategy, to put the funding source and how much we're spending on that item? Is that what you're asking?
I will say that a lot of feedback I got was, this is just a lot of artwork. And I'm like, well, there's a lot of data behind it. That's before, on this side of the fence. I said, there's a lot of data that goes behind that. Well, how do you find it? Well, you gotta go to this link, you gotta go to that link, you gotta go through so much. I don't know if it needs to be a printed thing or just a link. I don't, I don't know. I'm just saying, that was the feedback I got. This is really pretty.
Of finding the data.
Right. Finding the data is, like I said, the feedback I got from people with this printed version was this is just a lot of artwork. How do I know you're achieving these goals? And I went in to look at some of the metrics, and there's a data point, okay, this is the goal. Did we achieve it? And a check mark and a timeline and all of those different, it's a lot of complex stuff to go dive into. I mean, I was just looking at our math and reading scores last night and narrowing down the spreadsheet there and just to go through all of that and compare from one year to the next. And it's a lot of data, but like I said, the feedback I got was, this is just a lot of artwork and pretty words. And that's quoted from people that I worked with. That's, I mean, it's a lot of artwork and that's a lot of time. I've put together programs before and it takes a lot of time to construct something like this. But adding dollars to that or something, or a link of how we're utilizing all of our funding would be nice. That's just my opinion based on feedback I got. But I do like that dual enrollment thing, I mean, dual unemployment. I think that's, you know, if somebody's working for us and they leave and go work at another place, I think that's, yeah. Okay, that's all I had. But thank you. This is really a lot of stuff. I appreciate all the work everybody's put into it. But that's what I said, tie each dollar to each goal.
Anyone next?
I'll go. Ms. Mester? For the 2020, 2022 Plan, if you go online for the 2020, 2022 Plan, there is a strategic plan tracker. And I always found that tool to be very useful. It sounds like maybe you're advocating for something like that, where it may not have like this specific line item of money, but it might say how far they have progressed in whatever the goals or metrics are. And that, I mean, I think that was always available to the public, not with the new strategic plan, but with the previous one. And there are even, you can see which ones have been completed. You can see which ones continued into the new one. So, that is online.
Yeah. Five thirty twenty-two is the last time I was up.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, that's the old one. I'm acknowledging that. But what I'm saying is maybe something like that for this new one, maybe that is what you're asking for. Something like that, but maybe defining what things we want on there is important.
Thank you, Ms. Mester. We did have a tracker on there for this plan that is currently updated, but it was taken down because it was not ADA compliant. So, to make it ADA.
There was not one.
It has, it has taken even till January twenty-third to, we're still not ADA compliant, so.
Provide like some kind of.
It's a very.
Audio.
To take this thing and make it ADA compliant. So, we're almost there. We're almost there.
Because I do remember, I was gonna say, because I do remember seeing it, especially the workshop. I remember seeing the tracker, and so I figured we had it.
Yeah, which details every, where we are in every metric. And then we didn't want to violate anything, so.
I appreciate you being a rule follower.
Yeah.
Unlike Mrs. Foreman.
Unlike.
She would tell you to break all the rules.
So, I will make that a major priority to get that on the website as fast as possible.
Well, and I appreciate you saying that because, you know, you're right, like that, there's like a lot of checks going on right now with ADA stuff. So, I really do appreciate that. But I just wanted to highlight that I think that's something that existed and it was available, because it exists, but it's not available, then that might cure some of your concerns because, and I thought it was really helpful too. I think that was, might have been Mrs. Foreman's idea. I don't.
I think it was back.
I think it was.
Believe it or not.
I like to give her all the credit whatever I can.
I do have good ideas.
You do.
Whether they're legal or not.
It's called the Foreman Tracker.
That's it. See? Boom.
But the, but also a reminder that on our district website, we have an academic dashboard that is updated by school and by the district and by school of academics of every school and broke it down very granularly, and also a financial dashboard, I believe, too. So, that also tracks. That doesn't quite answer Miss Spray, but I just wanted the public to know as well that we have two very active, up-to-date dashboards on our district.
And I'll just real quickly say, because I've heard this several times now from a lot of people. The website does have a lot of stuff. You're only, there's only a finite place to put everything. What I think that user error, and I'm not trying to be mean about this, but I'm just gonna be honest. There's a search tool on the top right of our website that if you click that search tool and put in what you're looking for, you're gonna get what you're looking for. Now, you're probably gonna get even more than once because it comes up in more than one place. So, instead of hunting around and pecking around the website, I think we just need to tell people to search what you're looking for. For, like, for instance, right now, I just put in strategic plan in that search, and boom, it comes up. I didn't have to go through district, strategic planning, all that kind of stuff, right? Because it is, it is a lot when you go on the website. There's a lot of information. So, I just want to make sure we're able to, hopefully, we tell the public, this is why I'm saying it. Use that search tool and you're gonna be able to find anything you're looking for.
Yeah.
Instead of hunting around and using your time.
I appreciate you saying that because typically, I will explain to people like, hey, these things are available. Like, there is a, there is a financial tracker. There is one where you can compare all the school grades and all the academic stuff. Because you do get those questions, but being able to explain like, no, it exists and we are incredibly transparent. It's all right there, you know, but you, we are those people that can't advocate. We can inform, right? We can say, you know, these things exist. They are here. You can go and get this information. We are very transparent. Our budget is published. It is audited. Everything is audited. But here's our grades. Here's the academics. Here is, and it is granular. You're right. It goes into even like the different buckets and stuff. And so, I really appreciate you pointing that out. But to Mrs. Spray's point, you know, that was, the tracker is, it kind of ties some of those different pieces together and makes it simpler for the board, makes it simpler for the community to be able to say, look, this is how far along they are on those things. So, hopefully, we can find a way to make that compliant. That's interesting. Kind of to answer some of the other things that were brought up because I want to make sure that there is some sort of consensus because I don't feel like it's fair to the district if we don't walk away with some sort of consensus today. I don't feel like that's fair to the superintendent. I don't feel like that's fair to anyone if we don't have some sort of consensus among us, at least on some of the big things.
Like, consistence on, consensus on.
Focus.
Recommendations and things like that.
Yes. Because I do wholeheartedly agree, like, in this job, there will always be things that an outside group will bring up to you. And you will think, oh, my gosh, the world's on fire. This thing is happening. But what you are gonna have to realize is, that thing might be happening and that might be something for that one group. But this is, as a whole, fifty thousand students, seven thousand employees, a hundred thousand parents. And is that one thing really the fire that I really want the district to focus on? And really take that on? We can't always go and say, well, that's it now, or this is it now. Because if we're doing that, then the district is chasing that instead of really whatever our overall arching focus is. And it really becomes really clear to me what our focus is, just based on all of us. Four out of five, I'd like to know which one didn't say anything about learning and literacy, but I won't ask today. But four out of five, I'll take that. That is a consensus. That is a strong consensus. That's a super majority, friends. And that's saying, early learning and literacy is what is our biggest focus. There might be other pieces that are important, but early learning and literacy, four out of five board members selected things in this section. So, to me, that's our consensus. We say, this should be your biggest focus. That should be the biggest piece. Yeah, are there other things? Sure. I think we can all agree there are other pieces and we should talk about those as well. But to me, it's pretty clear where that consensus is. And if you want it more granular than that, then we'll have to really have some debates on which one of these things because I can tell you exactly which ones I picked, and so I don't mind doing that. But to me, I want to make sure that we walk away with giving some sort of overarching focus on these are our top, however many we want to give, not too many, because that's a foolish decision by us of saying, these are our major things. These are the things we want you to go at first. And you know what? When we get this tracker and it is ADA compliant and we can say, oh, look, those have all hit a hundred percent. Let's move on to our next ones or whatever, however else we want to tackle it. Maybe that's the best way to do it. But I don't think we can say, everything is of the same importance just because it's here. Everything down here is important, but it's not of the same importance. And there's got to be some sort of hierarchy, so I really, I do appreciate that. And if we're not consistent, and if we don't remain consistent, there isn't going to be movement in that area that we determine is the most important. If we don't say steadfast in saying, no, no. And that's what I think is really appreciative about your idea about having that matrix because that would force the district and the board to be steadfast in, here are the most important things. Is it one of the, does it fit in one of these? No. Is it still really could be truly innovating? Okay, maybe we'll talk, tackle it. But that would create that focus that I think this board needs and I think that we need to offer to the district. Because if we don't do that, I think that there's, I just, I think that is a mistake. There was, you mentioned about school grades not being on here and graduation rates. And I'm not sure I remember the exact discussions around those two things. I think that the guiding idea behind not including those specific things was that there are games that can be played to increase both of those that may not really lead to better outcomes or more achievement. And the goal was not, would we love to be in a district? Yeah. But would I care more if our Title I schools are reading on grade level? Yeah. I'd rather focus on literacy and, oh, how do we make them a better person before they graduate? Then, how many did we graduate? Yeah, I agree with you. I know we're below, especially in graduation rate, and I acknowledge that. And perhaps we should add that. I'm not saying that's not important. It is important. But this district lived through some history of graduation rates being manipulated to make it look better and putting something on here that would be directly tied to that could then either lead to that happening again or an impression that it is. And I don't want that. Whereas, let's just focus on making sure we're teaching the best that we can to the standards that we can and training people for workforce if that's what we believe is important. And then let those be the metrics rather than those specific things, you know. And the other thing I want to say is, when we were creating this, there were so many things that were up in the air about testing, standards, grades, and all those other pieces. And I think we felt like we don't even know what that's gonna look like. So, maybe it is more appropriate now, now that we have a better idea of what it's gonna look like, to add that. I'm not against that. There's a lot of different pieces that go into it that we do want to see improvements in. So, I can see adding that. I'm not against it if the board would like to do that. And I like the idea of updating it every year. I think that there's merit to that because everyone up here should have ownership in this and believe in it and get behind it. So, if that takes updating it every year, that's fine. Doesn't mean wiping things out, but, okay, this one's less relevant now. Talked about reporting. I want to make sure I hit on all the things that you had asked questions about, reporting. I think since there are so many metrics in our old, the tracker that's here, it was by goal and then went through every single metric. I think we have to make the decision, do we want staff to spend more time reporting on this or more time actually getting stuff done?
Yeah.
Because that's the decision too, right? Like, okay, yes, you can report on two hundred and something metrics, and I'm not saying that's not valuable. But if you are, then how much time is being spent doing that versus how much time is really being spent getting those things done? And then that person that got it done, then collecting the data to submit to somebody else, to then put it into this, then to calculate it, then to make it all look like this, which is now not ADA compliant? Like, it's just, it's a lot, it's a lot that we're asking that has nothing to actually do with making the gains. And I just feel like that's the bureaucracy of that. We either choose, we want to go into it and say, yes, report on everything, or we go into it and say, no. Let's just focus on the goals. There are twenty-two of those. That's an achievable thing. Let's just, it'll be overarching. It may not be those specific metrics, which is what we've had, but it might. I personally think I'd rather be by goal. I think that that would be more beneficial to the district. I don't think, we don't, I just don't see making it deeper than that. I just think we're gonna spend so much time collecting data and then we won't even be able to look at it online because we're breaking the rules. I'm trying to make sure I go through everything to most important. I think that's where I'm at right now.
Yep. Thanks, Ms. Foreman.
Yeah, okay. I am just overwhelmed by your analysis of strategic plan. I thank you for that. So impressed. Now, I'm number five. Okay? It's not to say. I confess.
You're number five.
And the reason is, I, the idea of coming in and saying, okay, we're supposed to do five. These are the, these are the metrics, these are the measurements I want. To me, if it's not worth measuring, it's not worth putting in the strategic plan, you know. And so, I have a real problem with that. I agree with, we need to prioritize, okay, which ones are important. Maybe they get a star or something in the, in, you know, the goal. We need to prioritize the goal, not the strategy, not the metric, the goal. And I'm looking at the tracker from two, you know, the last one. And in some cases, the goal is tracked. In other cases, it's only the metric. And I think if we bring that down. In other cases, it's only the metric, and I think if we bring that down, and in some of it, in order to track the goal, you have to have certain metrics to measure it. Um, rather than have a line, you know, here's your goal, is it completed a hundred percent, what percentage of the metric? Um, I think just an analysis, you know, a statement of, for example, by 2023, fifty-six percent of our third grade students will meet or exceed grade level expectations for reading. Now, they stated there, in their description or their notes, what the numbers were, and obviously, they had to do metrics to, to create that. However, there are goals that do not have any commentary. Um, for example, recruit the most qualified, diverse, and motivated staff. First of all, it's a terrible goal, because you, how do you measure the most qualified? Um, but there's, there are some metrics, and I think just a narrative of what the current situation is, as opposed to a, you know, a line, because I, one thing about the tracker I never liked, is it just said metric completed.
Yeah.
Um, you know, survey employees, September twenty twenty-one, metric completed. Um, that one's easy to say, yeah, it's completed, but some of them are certainly more, um, I, I don't even know the right word for it, but it, it just, it's not a, uh, it's not a black and white.
Right.
And so, rather than try to turn this into something black and white, I would rather see us, um, be transparent, be, you know, and, and, you know, um, and, and some kind of a narrative to put on there, also would help with the ADA compliance, you know. Um, as far as the tracker goes, being pulled off, I would appreciate the board all receiving the current tracker, whether it's online or not, and that way, if a constituent wants to know what we've got, they would be able to, uh, to get that information. But absolutely, and I don't know if we want to determine our priorities today, but absolutely, early learning and literacy is certainly number one. Uh, one thing not mentioned is security, safety and security. Uh, another one is, uh, the graduation rates, in order to get there, you gotta get the kids to school. I worry about the kids who are not attending, you know, and, um, you know, so attendance would be one. I'm happy to prioritize what I, the goals that I think should be, um, that we should be attempting. And how we measure those, uh, I would, uh, I would look to the superintendent's wisdom on that. Um, anyway, so I'll leave it at that.
And when you guys are saying prioritize goals, you mean the current ones we have, maybe the new suggestions from the superintendent? Is that kinda what I'm hearing, like, I know you mentioned it, mentioned it too, prioritizing the goals?
Well, just for instance, like, um, when we were asked to pick our goals, like, I picked five specific goals out of this strategic plan, and I sent those five.
Right.
So those were my five, you know, I didn't pick up new ones, I said, these were the ones that I think are the most important, that I would prioritize.
Right, and that's where they came back with four, saying, this, three, six, so
Yeah.
we've already kind of prioritized from a not sitting here talking about it, but we have prioritized somewhat early learning, employees, and then there is, what, one, two, three, four, another seven bullet points, right? That were just mentioned, but not prioritized. So are those the ones we wanna say from these seven, we're looking to now say, 'cause we got our one and two, that was pretty clear. So then these seven ones that were listed, that we had obviously, some of us board members mentioned as priorities, but it just wasn't a consensus at the time.
No, I just wanna say though, are you, so if we all said grade level proficiency, right, and the, the kindergarten readiness and grade level proficiency, or whatever it was.
Early learning.
Early learning, or whatever. Um, maybe I have, no, I have the ready twenty-six one up here. Um, there are multiple goals.
Underneath that.
Underneath that. So are we going to say there's an entire section with six goals, or ten goals, or whatever? Or are we gonna say, no, no, it's really these three?
Out of the six.
Out of six.
That would be a question, I'd go back to the superintendent, is that what you're, is that kinda the guidance you're looking for?
Yeah, and, um, this is a great discussion, board members, thank you, I'm glad you, uh, have the opportunity to talk to one another. Um, I, my initial thought, um, pending hearing from everybody, is for example, if there's consensus that this board really wants to prioritize early learning and literacy, then I would go back to Mr. Jensen and the instructional team and say, given what's in the strategic plan right now, which goal, the, um, which goals, if attained, move the needle the most?
Okay.
And then I think we would bring that back to you as a recommendation for, let's identify these as priorities, and here's how we would track and record them. Um, and I think to the vice chair's point earlier, here's how we might prioritize resource methodologies in the future, based on early learning, learning and literacy as one of the board's primary priorities, does, does that make sense?
Yeah.
We could do the same thing with employees, or any other broad themes you identify. Um, because I know that the other, the, the granular work is, is hard to do, um, in real time, as you're sitting there thinking about all of this. So we can take that back, and then bring it back to you at a future workshop, um, as, you know, as, here's a potential update with your priorities reflected, and then you can tell us what you think.
I, I, I personally would like that, because, um, obviously, four out of the five chose early learning, three out of the five employees.
Make it five.
Well, I know, I'm just, but, but, but then, then there's goals inside of that, so now we're gonna sit here and talk about which should be one, and five. I would rather see from you all, you know, from, from, you're the, you're the professionals, what are you think exactly right, which one's gonna move the needle, which goals, and we can say, yes, we agree with that, or hey, and then debate over which ones, I mean, because they're all, they're all important, like, you know, teacher bus driver turnover, how's that any more or less than, you know, ensuring E S C classrooms are adequately, I mean, it's just, they're all equal, so I don't wanna sit here and start like...
But they can't all be equal, that's the whole point.
I agree, I agree with you.
Then there's not gonna be a focus, and...
But I don't want to, I don't think that it's our job to get into necessarily the, I feel like we're, we're tipping to a little bit, to operation-ish a little bit, so I would rather see what, what your ideas are, to what your goals, and what you guys feel like, hey, this is obtainable, et cetera, than us just mandating something we don't even know.
Um, one of the, the absenteeism rate. I got a text from somebody, I don't know what is our absenteeism rate, someone said it was like twenty-six percent to me. I'm like, really, are we that high on the scale of, of that? And all of that, I mean, if kids aren't in the classroom, we're not gonna achieve a lot of these goals. If our absentee rate is that high, to me, that's high. I don't know what the norm is across other districts, but do you know what that rate is, or not?
Well, I saw the article, there's article came out that talked about.
Yeah, that talked about it, so...
Someone's three, someone's twenty-seven, someone's thirty, I mean...
That, okay, that's where I read it, so...
So there are, I mean, in general, absenteeism is a national problem, right?
Right.
Everybody's dealing with it, there are a lot of different ways to measure absenteeism, right? And, and that's one of the nuance of the metrics, so Florida has a statute that talks about how many days in thirty, or how many days in ninety, and how that eventually leads to a truancy process. Um, there, um, um, there are different, um, research studies that talk about, you know, or try to approximate learning loss related to time out of school, right? And, you know, once upon a time, we talked about excused and unexcused, what the research says is, it doesn't matter why you're not in school, right? If you're not in school, you're missing learning time.
Right.
Um, and, um, and so, um, there's also, there's chronic absenteeism, that's defined a little differently, so we, what we could do is, is put that data together. Um, a- and again, I would argue that there are, again, goals, strategies, and metrics in the current plan that if fully implemented, improve student absenteeism rates.
Right.
But there's not a specific measure there, and we would have to talk about what, what methodology, um, and, and what are the criteria? But we can put the general data together, if, if, if the board is interested in that. Um, so I don't, you know, again, it's not that, um, it's not that it's not in the plan, it's probably not as explicit as it could be, if that's one of the board's top priorities.
Thank you, um, Ms. Farm, are you done?
Yeah.
Your thoughts, okay.
I missed it.
So, maybe I could speak with Mr. Chapman for a few minutes, Dr. Weisong, would that be, okay, thanks. So I was looking at the matrix from the twenty twenty-two plan. Can you talk to me a little bit about who, who maintains this chart? How many hours of work it takes to maintain it? I'm, I'm just curious about how, you know, what's the process that goes around to
Sure.
tracking all this stuff, I guess?
That's a good question.
Yep.
Uh, let's say, uh, Kevin Chapman's responsible for it. Uh, I work with the people, my colleagues to make sure it's as updated as possible, um, where we're not, to Dr. Weisong's point, um, spending our days doing that, so, um, there's certain points of the year to do that, that kind of also goes along with what you all have been receiving, right? So, so, um, you know, uh, as Mr. Jensen comes up here and talks about our, our P M two data, um, that is, that is internally, we're, we're tracking where we might be, you know, we're, we're right now, uh, you know, computing potential, uh, school grade projections, you know, those are all the metrics we're using internally to see where we're at, to then the curriculum team makes those adjustments along the way. So that's the important work Dr. Weisong is saying needs to happen, and not get in the way of anything else, right? That's the most important work. I then see that, hear that, and think to myself, okay, how can I, you know, along the way, update the strategic plan and tracker to make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, and then somehow report on that? So when, uh, Scott Hanson and the I T team are, are redoing our media centers, for example, so we're, when I hear that, you know, another media center's coming online, okay, well, how many more are there? Uh, fencing projects, uh, camera, uh, security projects, construction projects, uh, you know, job fair information, you know. So when I start seeing all that, um, I'm, I think to myself, okay, we've gotta start, uh, potentially updating this, so, usually, I would say somewhere in every couple of months, uh, I'm, I'm looking to update that tracker. Um, uh, obviously, when it comes to curriculum, you've got the, the testing that we now have, you know, we've, we used, we used to have benchmarks, now there's these P M tests. Um, so to answer your question, I, I am responsible, Mr. Edwards and I are responsible with the tracker. Um, there is a, uh, graphic design component of it, which, which we just lost our graphic designer, somewhat of the reason why, uh, the ADA compliance delayed, delayed a little bit, but, um, uh, so when Dr. Weisong was coming on, we knew he was coming on in July one, we wanted to make sure there was a, there was a tracker in place of where we were with the plan while he came on. Um, we then started a new school year, we have new, we're working on new standards this year. Uh, everything counts this year, right, grades, everything counts this year, so there is a, an internal mindset that come June one, we're gonna have results for the first time, uh, with proficiency and all of the things that are made up in these standards. So come June one, or, you know, give or take, we're gonna know where we are as a school and as a district under these standards for really the first time. Um, so there's, there's, there's tracking along the way, but really, with this tracker, the summer, in my mind, would be the time where I'm updating this tracker, when it comes to where we are with our, you know, early learning, where we are with graduation rates, all those things that matter at the end of a school year. So there's, the calendar sets when I update the tracker. Um, on Mr. Rinaldi's side, when I see projects and things advancing, there's, I can easily advance, you know, update the tracker that way. Um, there's an I T graphic design component of it, of when we can get to it and track it. Um, and then the board schedule, you know, knowing when a good time is to update and talk about this, you know, right now, this is a good time to talk about this, because Ms. Sellers and her team are now preparing the budget for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, which you'll see soon, right? So, um, if that makes sense, there's a lot of different components that make up to when and where we, we, we track this. Uh, and then there's, Mr. Dr. Weisong's evaluations of his team at the end of the, of the end of the fiscal year to see, uh, you know, adjustments staff-wise, and, and principal-wise, and curriculum-wise, and to see where if those adjustments need to be made, is if people aren't, you know, hitting, hitting the mark on, on where they should be, so there's, there's all these parts of, of making it, but yes, it's a one or two-person team doing this, essentially, uh, a- and where, you know, corporations may have outside consultants doing it, or they hire, you know, Ernest and Young to go and do it. Uh, uh, but this is a two-person operation to kinda get this done, working with the team, my colleagues. Long answer, but I think that helps you understand along the way.
So this might seem like a little bit of a cynical question, but I do wanna know the answer to it. So when people are bringing agenda items forward, you know, on the, on all of the agenda items, there's always some reference, it appears, to the strategic plan, like, I just picked one from the last board meeting, and it's aligned to Ready to Grow Goal Five, so when people within the system bring agenda items forward, do they, do they pull out the strategic plan and go, hmm, I wanna make sure, I wanna do something that's in alignment with the strategic plan, so, uh, I could do something to support that? Or do they come up with their idea, because they think it's good for their office, or their division, or whatever? And then after they come up with it, they go, well, I know that for an agenda item, we have to have a strategic plan aligned to the strategic, strategic plan, so they look at their item and they go, well, it has to do with, um, improving third grade reading, and so they go through the plan and they go, oh, there it is, that's the thing that it aligns with, see what I mean?
Sure.
So which one is it, is it, I've got a great idea, and I'll go match it to the plan, or am I actually consulting the plan, and coming up with my great ideas?
Yeah, I'd answer it first by knowing that everything we do, uh, is aligned to the strategic plan, and the goals and priorities of the school board and the superintendent, so, uh, with that in mind, um, you, to, to, there was a decision made a few years ago, uh, by the school board, to say, you know, it'd be good to align uh, school board agenda, agenda items to the strategic plan, so the public can see why we're doing what we're doing. Um, then it goes back to the I T system, right? So the Granicus and these systems that we use can only be as detailed as they are. So to your, to your second half of your, of your, uh, good question, um, uh, there is a time where uh, the important work that we're advancing to you all is happening, we, we do then now have to align it to the strategic plan, so there are times where somebody might say, uh, jeez, now where does this fit, what goal does this fit, now they're under the, obviously, they're working towards implementing the strategic plan. Um, so generally, everything is gonna, everything is always gonna fit under Ready to Life, Ready to Grow, Ready to Learn. Uh, and then probably one of those goals, but then under one of those strategies and metrics, uh, that sometimes may be, may be hard to find, but that's because we're working in the Granicus I T system. Um, maybe in a better world, we could, we could drill down and actually say, you know, this is gonna move metric number blank under strategy blank under goal blank, under, under Ready to Life or Ready to Grow. Uh, and we can work on that, to make it a little more specific to, to your point of this is, this is, you know, um, you're gonna hear next what science adoption materials, right? So, you know, we could, you could say, so you're gonna get that agenda item soon that says that these are the textbooks we're gonna purchase through, once we go through the process of science adoption. Where does, so then that person isn't thinking about it until they create the board item, and then they go, where does purchasing instructional materials for science curriculum fit under in the strategic plan? And then they, they look for it, so, and, and, and so they'll probably fit, you know, Ready to Learn under this goal, but there is no actual goal that says, you know, purchase quality, state-of-the-art instructional materials, but there are goals that say, you know, raise our science, uh, you know, proficiency, or, um, you know, graduation rate, or whatever that kinda fits in. Does that kinda make sense? And then they'll, they'll either, um, and if there is an issue, they usually, my colleagues usually consult, Mr. Edwards and I, to kinda see where, where perhaps... they usually, my colleagues usually consult Mr. Edwards and I to kind of see where perhaps that fits. But again, in the more, in a perfect world, it would be nice to maybe get that granular on, on board work, and that's something that we can probably work on.
I'm actually not looking for, for what you just suggested. What, my big, my big issue with the whole plan is that it's too big and it's too complicated, and it doesn't focus on, it doesn't get us focused at this level at least on the things that we'd like to do. Plus, there's, there must be hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of work that go into tracking all these metrics and data collection. And I, I used to call this in the Air Force, the wouldn't-it-be-nice stuff. Wouldn't it be nice if we had a big strategic plan and we had like, I don't know, 25 or 30 goals, and then we had like four or five strategies under each one of those goals, and then we could come up with a metric, and we could have these metrics and we could track them, and that would be great. And it would be if we had Ernest and Young running this thing on the side for us or whatever, you know? So, you know, if I, if I were king, I'm not, but I would just, I don't, I don't think there's an appetite for this. But I would, I would just start from, I would start from zero with this, and I would go back and say, okay, we just got to prioritize a few things here. Increasing the number of eligible students in pre-K programs, man, we know if we can get these kids, you know, the next half of the day paid for and get them into a full day of pre-K, that's, that's really going to just help our education system a lot. I don't, I mean, I've, I, from what I've seen in the last year, I am 100% positive and sure that there are many people in this school system who are, you know, working very hard every day to make sure that our reading strategies are good and that we're, they, they know what the numbers are from the, from the testing and they're, we see these contracts come through all the time, we have tutors coming in. I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that we're working on it. But the point is, is I would just like to see four or five of them increase, that would be one of them. I'd like to see the buses running on time better. I mean, I know that we're trying that. I know people are working hard in that area, but trains don't run on time, so to speak, the system, the system breaks down. I'd like to see innovative employment opportunities that save money on employee costs. I actually like the part-time teacher idea. I think as ESSR money goes away and we need to find more ways to keep funds in the general fund that part-time teaching, you know, we could even do contract teachers that are on 1099 so we don't have to pay all their benefits because maybe they retired from another, they already have healthcare from a retirement they have or something like that. Making sure that our ESE classrooms are adequately staffed in accordance with principles for safety. You know, I, I have heard reports of teachers and parents going to the hospital and going to emergency rooms because of being attacked in their classrooms, and that's just completely unacceptable. So, you know, four or five things like that, and then just rebuild the plan almost on an annual basis where we, because things change and the dynamics change, and like Dr. Weisong said, the laws change, and it's, it's just too much to keep track of, and a lot of people are, I think, spending, expending a lot of time on this stuff. And I imagine you'd like to, there's some other things you and Ms., and Omar could be doing with your time rather than all this tracking. So that's, that's my big picture that I take away from this. I would like to come away with four or five or six things, and then just focus on them. It would take too much effort to kind of redo the whole thing, but those are, those are my big comments. It's too much, it's too, it's too much, it's too much to track. It's probably, the, the cost-benefit analysis of all the time that we do to track all these is probably not worth it, and it takes us away from the big picture of the things that we really need to get down around here, which are getting the buses to run on time, increasing the number of kids that get to do a whole day of pre-K, making sure that our schools are safe, coming up with some innovative employment activities to save some money in keeping people safe in our classrooms.
And I think that's the exact direction we were looking for. So I think
But that was my direction.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I think we're hearing similar, you know, and I, I think there was a good point Ms. Foreman said, that take the plan, star, or put something, a note in there that said, this is the goal, that, that, these are the goal, you know, five, six, whatever it is, goals that the board really wants to prioritize for now until the end of the year, or, you know, whatever that data is, we'll come back with exact, you know, metrics that we're going to measure with. You're going to hear the budget priorities aligned to that. And so I, I, I think that's exactly what we were, we were looking for.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yep. So that, that's very helpful, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think that's off-base at all. I think that the one thing we've got to remember though, too, about the strategic plan is, is this is like a four or five-year plan, right?
Mm-hmm.
So like, yes, it seems like a lot because it is, it's four years. I do think we've got to get more specific and prioritize yearly, and I, and I think that's what Dr. Weisong is asking for. And, and you've kind of nailed almost all of them, I think, personally, what, what we are doing are what we need to prioritize. But this is, this is a four-year deal, and I think that's why it's, it's pretty robust, number one. But number two, I agree that it is, I mean, just kind of overall talking about it, there's some of this that I feel like we, 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 we could have two documents, right? You've got the overarching, here's our priorities, here's our main goals, singular sentences, whatever. And then here's the nitty-gritty, right? And I, and I'll say like it's, 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 it's like building a house. Here's the, the overall blueprint, and it's easy to see how we actually get there and the things we do. The contractor is never going to show me because I don't know what he's talking about. So that, that to me, I think is two different things, right? I think that our yearly look at it is prioritizing it and making sure like we're knocking these out once we know we prioritize them and we're hitting them. They're always going to be a priority though, if we move on, you're not going to, we may nail buses, it'd be 100% for one year, you're not going to go to next year and say, oh, now we can be late all the time. So, but I do think we need to prioritize yearly or quarterly, half-year, whatever, and update that, however we kind of feel. I don't think we need it all at one time like a fire hose. I think that, that, so just looking at some of the stuff too that, that, so I think reporting of the goal is something I circled here. That was one of the first questions, is what level do you want the reporting? I think it's, it's by goal. I think Ms. Messenger said this too, it's by goal. And then when the reporting comes back that, hey, maybe we haven't met that goal, then it's a possibility, the next step is, well, what strategies were we using? And then it's a report on, we used these strategies and they didn't work. And then it's maybe, okay, what other strategies can we use, right? So because I don't think the strategy is, is us dictating to you all what the strategy is. That's why we hired you, is you to create that strategy of our goal. So I think if you report back to our goal, you get it done, great, you got it done, and, and you guys did a good job with it. So I would see goal, if we don't make it, then we move to strategy. And, and then obviously the strategy's not working, if we have ideas on other strategies or, or that conversation happens from there. Some of the, the thoughts that you had, the superintendent thoughts, what's missing? I think with the state, with the school grades and the state accountability system and that sort of thing, I think to me, that's so tough to have that as a measurement because it changes all the time, you know? I mean, it just changed, so it's, it's, it's never consistent to me to have that as a, as a, to see that as a goal because I think that the, the goals inside are going to create an A district. So I don't think we need to make, to say we want that A district, et cetera. And like I said, I think some of the, their, their metrics and stuff change frequently. I'll talk about the, the graduation rate in a second, but the, the growth management, including enrollment, competition, the choice, I think that's just new. I think when we first created this, it, HP1 hadn't come through yet, the vouchers, you know, all that wasn't, wasn't implemented. Now it is, and I 100% agree with you. This may now be a goal that we've never had before. Marketing may be a expenditure in our budget that we've never had before. And I'm just being honest, right? So I agree that that is definitely missing. I agree that we have programs that our district offers and ways to educate kids that other schools charter and private can't do, or they don't do as well. And we need to make sure they know that, right? We need to make sure they know that. So I, I highly agree with you about that is something that's missing. The absentee, you know, and graduation rates, I would like to see the breakdown, sorry, graduation rates first. I'd like to see a breakdown of the kids aren't graduating, and I don't know if we can, I don't know how we do this. And this is going to be effort and, and time, and so I get that as well. But I'd like to see a breakdown of, I'm just making a number up. We have 100 kids that didn't graduate. Out of those 100 kids that didn't graduate, or percentage, whatever you want to look at it, how many of those students were actually one in our system, and how long? Because that's a big tell. I come from Hillsborough County, my parents moved down here, I'm a senior, I did terrible all those years in school, I've got no credits. When all of a sudden, we get that, that rate or lack of graduation. So there's a lot of things that go into graduation rate that I think is overblown as a tool to look at, are you doing things successfully or not? Yes, ultimately, we want kids to graduate, that's, that's the ultimate goal. But there's a lot of things I think that can skew that number that are out of our hands. And absenteeism is one of them, et cetera. I don't know if we'll ever solve absenteeism unless our culture and our parents, et cetera, are saying this is a priority. Like you going to school is a priority. You know, you go back pre-COVID, and you had a little runny nose and a little sniffle and little body ache, you went to school. That ain't how it is anymore, right? Everybody says, you have one sniffle, don't come, you don't come this coughing, get out of here. You know, you walk in, you sneeze somewhere, and everyone looks at you like, you know? So I think that's a big difference, that's a cultural change that we're going through. And I think the only thing we can do is make sure that we are showing and educating parents on, and you said it, Dr. Weisong, how, the, the time you're out of school, how does that truly affect your, your, your learning? And maybe that'll help. But those are, those are some of my thoughts. I guess moving forward, because you obviously want, we need to have some kind of direction. So I guess moving forward, you know, I think what you mentioned, having your staff go back, you, you kind of see our priorities, maybe coming back with some of the, the goals, and then us saying, here's four or five of these goals that we really want to prioritize. Board, is that kind of what we would like to see happen, I guess? I mean, you know what I mean? And then we can come back and say, I, I mean, I think some of these, so, because we've already, we've already given our priorities, like
Right.
as far as like the overarching part, not the specific goals inside of those. So
And a couple of metrics, and a couple of metrics. I mean, where it's reasonable and not too much work, a couple of metrics, like it's pretty easy with the buses, they're on time
Sure, sure, sure.
Right?
Well, the grades we get from our, the progress monitoring and some of that stuff we get naturally. But does that help you, Dr. Weisong?
Yes, the, the discussion today's been very helpful, and, and I think the key piece of consensus is that you're open to an update of the plan that, that reflects priorities, and also changing resources and the changing landscape. And so I think we can go back and work on that as a leadership team, given what you've already provided, and then, and then we'll workshop again some suggested revisions, and then you can give us feedback. And if it looks like we're okay to move forward, then we can address it at a future board meeting.
Awesome. And I, I'll reiterate what Ms. Foreman said. Thank you very much. You all did a great job. I mean, this is, you're really digging into it, Dr. Weisong, and, and putting a lot of time and effort and seeing, now that you've been here for a little bit longer. And, and so I really appreciate that. And you said something too that, you know, we get, we get emailed, called all the time, and we go to these conferences, et cetera. You meet people and vendors, and they're like, this is a great idea, let's do this. I do love the fact that you said, you know, sometimes there are great ideas, but they just don't fit, right? Or you're going to have to remove something else for that, and is, is that what we want to do? And if it is, we can move forward. But so I appreciate that, that having you and your thought process, because it is true. I don't want to be, you know, we're doing all these, a lot of things, but not very well. I'd rather be concentrated and do the other things we need to do really well.
Yeah.
So thank you for that. I'm in another recess, are we okay with that, board?
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I just wanted to, you, you mentioned something, Chairman, about families, and I do believe it's their personal responsibility to get their kids to school. But there are some innovative opportunities and programs out there that we can, that we can help parents with. You know, I think some of them are in the works, like innovate, there's called accelerated academies, and there's a charter school that really focuses on that. So
Agreed.
So I'd like to make that part of what we're doing, you know, like
Agreed.
because there are just some, some families are set up with their work schedules where students actually have to work so that the family can pay the rent. And if we can help them get those up, look, I'd like to get my kid to school, but if my kid doesn't come and work with me today, we don't pay the rent. So how, how can we help families get their kids to school, even though it is their primary responsibility?
Yep, there's options, absolutely, agreed.
That was my last comment. Thank you.
We'll go on a 10-minute recess. We'll just say 11:50 to come back, and we'll do our last portion. Uh, we'll go on a ten-minute recess, we'll just say eleven fifty to come back, and we'll do our last, uh, portion. All right, welcome back. We are approaching our, our last workshop item, which is a presentation on the science instruction and material adoption. So, Mr. Jensen, Ms. Fleming, come on up. And before we get into this one, I, I was, I was telling Dr. Weisong this, um, a second ago. Uh, I know we just did the social studies and, and started, almost completed that, et cetera. I heard fantastic things specifically about you, Ms. Fleming, so thank you very much for everything you're doing.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, I heard, heard you were great through the whole process, extremely helpful, so. Congrats, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Uh, you stole my introduction because I was.
Oh, sorry.
In a social studies adoption, um, it went wonderfully, thanks to the leadership of Ms. Fleming, our curriculum department, the amazing, uh, teachers, administrators, uh, community leaders we had serving on these teams. And, um, as you know, throughout the fall, we, we did that social studies adoption. Um, the state has a five-year schedule at which they recommend districts complete instructional materials adoptions. And in line with that, we are now bringing you, um, actually, going back to social studies, in February, you will receive an item with that committee's recommendations. Um, on the thirtieth of this month, at the next board meeting, you will receive an item to kick off our science instructional materials adoption in line with that state five-year plan. And so Ms. Fleming is here to, to kind of walk you through that process, just like she did for social studies, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. We're still morning, right?
A little bit.
We are, for six more minutes. All right, so just like Mr. Jensen said, just going to walk us through our K-12 science, um, instructional materials adoption plan. Very similar to social studies, so you'll see a lot of this, the same process. I'm just going to ask that you hold comments, so they end it as a relatively short presentation. And so just a reminder, we have Florida law and school board policy and that requires the school board to adopt and provide instructional materials to the students in our district. Um, it also provides the guidelines for which, um, the adoption process follows. And that will be, um, highlighting in the next several slides. So just like Mr. Jensen said, the Florida Department of Education, um, reviews and adopts instructional materials in cycles. And, um, they're currently in the process of the science adoption at the state level. So they started back in the early fall, um, and they are finalizing their adoption. Um, and we should anticipate to receive the state adoption list for science towards the end of April or early May. So just keep that in mind. Um, all of the courses that we are adopting for are included in the state adoption review. And the courses, um, that we're looking at are K-five elementary science courses. For middle school, we have comprehensive science in grades six, seven, and eight. And then in high school, we have six courses, environmental science, marine science, biology, chemistry, physics, and anatomy and physiology. So those are the courses that we will be doing an adoption for. So next, I want to review the timeline. And this timeline will be posted, um, in a different format, but on our website. I will also make sure that each of you get a copy of kind of the clean version of the timeline, so you can see the important dates highlighted for when we'll be meeting as committees. Um, starting off, we are going to start by establishing our re, review committees. That'll take place right after the January thirtieth, um, meeting. And we'll talk more detail about that on the following slide. Um, following that, our publishers will submit their intent to participate in our adoption. And that happens via the AdCredible platform. Just a reminder, that's the platform we use, along with many districts in our state, to maintain transparency throughout the process. And we do a technology prescreen that, um, we do in collaboration with our IT department. And then, um, our instructional materials committee reviews happen at multiple select dates through February and March. We'll conduct a cost analysis. And then, um, reminder that we do send out, once the committee comes up with final recommendations or final selections, we send those out to our schools to get our instructional staff and instructional leaders votes. And then we come back as a committee to make a final recommendation, which is that second to last bullet there, where we'll make that recommendation to the superintendent, and then the superintendent makes the recommendation to the board. Um, our goal is, um, to bring it to you in the late April board meeting, so that we are able to order materials in late May or early June, so that we can implement at the start of next school year. So that's, I'm kind of working backwards in the timeline, so it is a, it is pretty quick, a little faster than social studies. But we're confident we can do it. All right, so the instructional materials review committee, again, the same as, um, we use for social studies. It'll be comprised of teachers, school-based administrators, instructional specialists, parents, and community members. Uh, we will do subcommittees at the different levels. So we had a K-five subcommittee, a six-eight subcommittee, and a nine-twelve subcommittee. Our committee member application will be available on our district website. So if you do the district website, you're, go under curriculum, and under textbook adoption, um, that's where the application will be found, and it'll be open from February first to February ninth. And then we will let, um, those that are interested know if they've made it onto the committee, um, by February sixteenth. Some important dates for our committee. We will kick off our, um, committee training on February twentieth, that will be a virtual training. We will start our instructional materials review with vendor presentations on February twenty-second. And then we have our finalist selection, where we review the evaluation results of the committee and come up with finalists. And then between those last two bullets there is when we send that information out to the schools, get the input from our instructional staff and instructional leaders on our campuses. And we will meet on April second as a committee in order to review the results of the votes and make the final recommendation. And then this last slide really just speaks to, um, the encouragement for our family and community engagement, engagement in this process. So they have the opportunity to serve as a committee member. Like I said, applications will be open from February first to February ninth. And they could always review the instructional materials. Uh, they'll be available physically at the PSC. And they will also be available, um, online and digital format. But just a reminder, we don't usually put that information out there until we have our finalists. So usually, it'll probably be late, uh, February, early March, when you'll see that. And then, of course, um, we welcome any feedback or public comment throughout the process. We'll do the same thing like we did for social studies. We have a link, uh, to a form survey online that anybody at any time in the process can, um, submit a comment. And we will, um, make it public at our committee meetings. And that concludes the presentation. So open it for comments or questions.
I just have a quick question, why, um, it seems like a really short timeline. It, particular reason, like why one subject's given longer than another? Was it, was social studies the same? Seems like social studies was a little longer.
Social studies had a little bit longer of a window to work with. Um, we decided, it was kind of a late decision to move forward with the science adoption. And so we're trying to fit it into, uh, the time period that we can in order to order the materials, get them into our schools in enough time to provide the training for our staff.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, thank you. It was informative, but I don't have any questions.
Anything else from anybody?
No, I just pulled up twenty-five twenty policy that we just updated last, last meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How many, um, and you may not know this, I guess, off the top of your head, or maybe did we even track it? When, uh, how many people came by to, like, look at the books during the history, doing, doing that? Uh, how many came by, like? Because I know that was obviously one of the newest legislations, the transparency, everybody can come see it. Was there a lot of people that came and?
We've only had one community member that I'm aware of that has come to the PSC.
Okay.
To physically look at the books. And I'm talking about community member outside of our, our, our committee meeting.
Right.
Um, but of course, we also have them available online, so they may be accessing it that way, and I do not have.
Yeah. The data, yeah.
Yeah, I've been asking about the social studies books, um, my understanding, because they're still not upstairs yet.
They will be, I promise.
That, yeah, okay.
The last one, uh, came in yesterday, so we didn't want to take the copy that we had at the PSC from the public.
Uh-huh.
So we ordered an addition, or we didn't order, they provide an additional copy. But they will be, um, ready for you guys either today or tomorrow. And I will send an email to Ms. Cox, letting her know, as well as, um, access to the online materials if you choose to look at it that way as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Go warm up, go warm up.
Yes.
It's freezing. Great.
Um, that concludes all of our items. So unless somebody has any loud noises or outbursts, I think we're, I think we're good.
I had a thought, but it.
You want some?
Escaped your mind?
Yeah, I was going to say something at the end of the meeting, and then it's just totally blank.
Well, next time, next week.
I was going to say we'll see each other on Thursday.
Yeah, we'll see each other. Oh, yeah, that's right. We do have, uh, master board training Thursday, and then meeting next Tuesday.
And, oh, maybe that's what I was going to say. Um, I do have to take my husband to the doctor after another appointment. So I may have to skip out or not come until later, so that's all up in there.
Which one? The training?
The master board. Yeah.
Okay. All righty.
Well, we'll talk about.
With that.
Talk about.
Have a great day.
Thank you.